Council's approval, let's handle two, three and four first. We're waiting on Mr. Weisler to get back to town, he had travel plans over the weekend.
He's in the...
He coming?
Yeah. If we're gonna go...
And we're waiting on Trey, we may need some...
Oh, we're waiting on Trey to make the motion for those.
Two, three and four, can we combine those?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we adopt those. And that we appropriate the money, thirty-nine thousand now.
Is that an ordinance, that appropriate?
No, it's a resolution.
Okay.
We'd entertain a second on that.
Second.
All right, let's have some discussion. Who wants to run through that for the council, please? Bob, you want to cover it, or Keith? Why don't y'all tag team?
(inaudible)
Okay.
(inaudible) Mr. Jackson, speaking to the council. Out of two, three and four, we're looking at a four-hundred-foot runway extension. We're looking at two hundred square meters, we are starting from there. This is a ninety-ten matching grant. And we've got some upfront cost engineering. We have to do a noise contour study for the FAA. The upfront engineering is so we can get everything ready and put out the bid. These grants, fifteen million dollar grants that are available through the ADA. I think their first meeting, or first release of grant money will be this month. They're anticipating this grant period to run for ninety days. So we're trying to get everything done, we're on a real tight timeline budget. But we're trying to get everything done where we can submit this by May thirty-first for consideration in the June meeting. This is a very good opportunity to have a permanent footprint at the airport using ninety-ten money. I think this is a big step for the airport, be very beneficial for the airport.
Keith, Mayor, members of the council, it's indeed a pleasure to be with you this afternoon.
The project, as Keith outlined, is a four-hundred-foot extension to the east towards the railroad. This project probably would never be funded by the federal folks through FAA. The last extension we did at your airport was funded through the state. The state recently changed their funding program to allow a ninety-ten project up to five-hundred thousand state share, which added another fifty-five thousand, total five-hundred fifty-five thousand, that you could spend on paving, paving only. This project fell within that budget limitation, and you have an estimate there in front of you. First page is for the extension itself, the second would be, in the future, you would want to extend the taxiway to the end of this pavement. The project has some other costs, as Keith indicated. The FAA, even though they would not fund it, still want to do an environmental assessment of this project. And the, some of the upfront items there will be taken into consideration. The FAA will have to put their blessing on that, and we're getting close to that. So we wanted to go ahead and proceed and get this thing ready for bids, get it out for bids, and try to make that deadfall with the state. They feel like their money will run out at some point, and on this type of funding, and we want to take it, the city of Russville wants to take advantage of it if you can on the thing. If there are any questions about the project, you also have an aerial photograph there in front of you. It depicts the four-hundred-foot extension there on the right side, or the east end of the runway. It gives some numbers there, and some alphabet soup, if you will, with those numbers, and that has to do with, the extension that you're going to do will be behind the threshold, it's called a displaced threshold. So you don't get credit for the full length of the runway in all the directions, just in certain directions. And that's what, you're limited with the highway, with the railroad. This is the best available that you can get. There are requests by jet air operators on the field, that you get more length to provide a greater safety margin for those folks taking off on a hot summer day with the maximum load that they can. So this is providing safety, not necessarily enticing a bigger aircraft to come to your airport, of course, they always could, but it's meeting the needs of those airplanes that are using your facility at the current time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
So this extension really wouldn't upgrade our airport, our runway for larger aircraft?
You could bring a larger aircraft in based upon the fifty-five hundred length, and it would be taking off from the east towards the west, or if you're landing from the west towards the east, you have a greater stopping distance. So it will benefit and potentially bring in larger aircraft. But the selling point that we're using to the state is it'll meet the needs of those that are coming in.
The, Bob, the white dash line is the boundary, right, for the entire airport on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
Right. So the little red, I can't read, my glasses are not that good. My eyes are fine, it's just my glasses.
(laughing)
Whatever that red line is, there's some red notation with it, runway safety...
Runway safety area?
Area, okay, all right.
And that has to do with the runway itself?
Yeah.
It's seventy-five feet either side of the center line along the runway, and then it would go here, three hundred feet beyond the end of the pavement.
Okay, gotcha.
So where would the money come from for this, for our ten percent? And the money's there, it's available? Okay.
We're good.
Everybody else okay?
Yeah.
I got one, Mr. McCoy, they're wanting thirty-nine thousand dollars here, if you've got a place we can scratch that up. Any other questions? We've got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to item one, agreement with Van Horn for the Aquatic Center. By now you've all received my reason for why I vetoed the contract, and you should have all received a response that Mr. Weisler offered to deal with that. I recognize that's not an insignificant offer on his part, and I felt like it would be in our interest to get together and discuss that.
Mayor, if I may, with, and I don't have a copy of Mr. Weisler's letter in front of me, and remember the word for word, but the content of that letter, does that, and I think your other concern was something about the thirty days and something percent, and ninety days and something percent state law?
Yeah.
Are those the two issues kind of at hand?
Yeah, and really the ninety days was just something I came up with later on. As long, if we're gonna make some changes, I'd like to ask y'all to consider changing that.
So...
So why are you wanting us to change?
So if I made a motion to amend that contract with those two changes, would that allow us to move forward?
If that's what the council decides to do, I think it's, I think there's a difference now, as I said in my letter, the eighteen thousand dollars was the only tangible number we had to work with. We can get into more specific numbers now, and I think if everybody's, you know, if we work together and we, I think we at least could make a decision based on numbers that we do know, instead of based on numbers that we do not know. For some reason, that makes a lot of difference to me. I think the council ought to have a discussion about it. But Mayor... Let me go ahead and talk about the other part of that. In the contract, we just had it in there, that any invoice is not paid in thirty days, we would pay four percent interest. But I believe state law says ninety days and ten percent, Mr. Smith, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
I don't think it will ever come up, but the deal is, they submit their invoices to the architect, the architects have to sign off on them, they get back here, Jerry needs a little bit of time to process it. I don't, I know Mr. McCoy tries to pay invoices the day they, or within the week that they're delivered, but just since that's the way it's prescribed, I felt like it might work better that way. On the other hand, I like four percent, way better than ten percent, but if I read the book right on that, it's ninety and ten. Can we find somewhere happy in the middle? What do you think, Mr. Smith?
I think if both parties agree, then we could keep it at four, because, I mean, do we need to change the ETC contract that says it's one percent after sixty days?
I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going by the book. So I think it's okay as is, if it's agreeable to the other party, which it was at the time.
All right. Keeping it like, moving it to ninety days, or sixty days, or...
If we want to change the, how much time before a late payment charges interest, we can do so, if they want to be agreeable to that.
Does Van Horn have a position on that?
(inaudible)
Counsel prefer to just leave it as is, or...
As is now, it's four percent, thirty days?
Forty-five days make you feel better, as far as having a little bit of room there between the architect and Mr. McCoy? Mr. McCoy?
If he don't hold you up, fine.
Let me ask that, when does the clock start on thirty days? When it's submitted to the architect, or...
(inaudible) That's the case, would you like to move back?
Yeah, forty-five days would be better.
Can you live with that? Is everybody else okay with that? As to the main issue, the eighteen thousand dollars, which Mr. Weisler has agreed to defer until the end, and then if we accept your guaranteed maximum price, that would just be covered in the cost of the contract, am I understanding correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
But Mayor, the eighteen thousand dollars is really not off the table. I mean, you know, it just went at in a little bit different direction. I mean, it's kind of like the trading cards here, you know, one deal don't work, let's try another deal. You know, I assumed that, that when we started this deal, if we didn't reach an agreement with a contractor, a construction manager, we were, we were to move on. And we obviously didn't reach an agreement based on your veto, so unless your veto gets overridden, or, you know, I don't, you know, I hardly see how it's legitimate to just keep on negotiating and come up with another, another way to do this.
Mr. Stuber, the veto was only on the eighteen thousand, it wasn't on the other.
But Mr. Wiley, the eighteen thousand is still on the table.
Mr. Smith, would you care to advise to that?
I guess what particular...
Is there anything prohibits us to passing amended version?
I don't believe so, just because the veto was for that specific contract, wasn't for negotiations still going on until the majority of the council wants to move to the next one.
So just to put it in discussion mode, I would make a motion to amend that contract, as the mayor has stated, as stated in the letter, and change that forty-five day term. So if there's a second, then we'll get started in discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. You know, there are still things that aren't on the table here, that relates to the, the construction managers' cost, charges for, for items on this project. You know, they're gonna have, they're gonna have charges for a construction manager's, job superintendent, secretaries, bookkeepers, equipment rental, they're gonna have, they're gonna have charges for everything that is a cost item for them on this project. And why we're reluctant to put that on the table, I don't know. You know, that's something that, that should be looked at, before we move on with it.
Or do you not think that regardless of who the, the construction manager is, they're gonna have to do the same thing?
They're gonna have to do the same thing, Mr. Wiley, but, 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 but if we don't know what those charges are, they can be anything. You know, it's, you know, now, you know, I've heard the word, it's all about trust, you know, somebody's gonna have to trust the city of Russville a little bit, too.
Well, is that not, is that not why they give you a final bid when the project is completed by the architect? You get a final bill then, and then you know what the bottom dollar's gonna be? Is that not right?
Mr. Wiley, if you don't care, if, if I may, I don't want to interrupt you, but I would like to say something into what you're saying there. What Mr. Stuber's speaking of are things that will be, I believe, included in the contract to accept the guaranteed maximum price, which is dealing with the construction part of it.
Yeah.
And all that, just, those fees, just like any other fee, or any other cost of the project, will come to us as a guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah.
Which at that point in time, we decide to move forward on or not, this just gets us to that point.
Yeah, I agree.
All that stuff will be included in a guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah.
At an hourly rate, and, or, you know, a monthly rate on equipment rental, or it could be daily rate, however they choose to, to do it. But, but, but there should be a, a cost that they know, should know right now, of how much those hourly rates are. You know, like equipment rental, equipment rental. You know, you know, that contract says, they can, you know, they charge a rate, but that rate, for the duration of that job, will not exceed the cost that item can be bought for new. You know, you could put a, and, you know, someone could, could go buy them a new backhoe and stick it out there, and charge, charge rent on it for a year, a year and a half, however long this project is, as long as it, they didn't charge more than it costs new, you know, they can put that in that contract if they so choose.
So we'll get another opportunity to look at this before we bid on it, before, before we vote on it, to file a deal?
I understand that, Mr. Wiley, but if we choose not to do it then, we're gonna spend eighteen thousand dollars, just like we're gonna spend it upfront. What's the difference?
Well, to me, the difference is, we would be looking at it after we get all of these numbers disclosed, if I'm following that correctly.
Yeah.
This was just a discussion that we had, in one of our discussions. And I, I've kind of learned it going through this process, if all you want is the absolute cheapest cost to build it, hard bid is probably the way to go. On the other hand, with this eighteen thousand dollars out of the way, we're gonna get to look at all of the other numbers, and we're gonna get to see just how much, if any, more expensive it is to do construction management. Am I being fair so far? There are benefits to the construction management method that we've all heard about. For one, you don't have to take the lowest bidder, if it's somebody that maybe makes it on paper, but you know from your own experience that they're not the best. There's a couple of other things that, that, you know, both sides have pluses and minuses. And we're not gonna know, no matter what you do today, we're not gonna know until this is over, if, if this was our best way, or the, or if the hard bid was gonna be the best way. But I think getting this roadblock out of the way, to where we can start negotiating A two oh one contract, which is where all of these costs are disclosed. Mr. Weisler, I believe you told me you won't even have a backhoe out there, is that correct?
We would probably have a backhoe on Skytrack.
Okay. What would be typical to expect on a rent of a backhoe? Will you rent it for every day, or are you just gonna rent it for when it's used?
Generally, because of the...
I'm sorry, I've been reminded to tell everybody to get to the...
(inaudible)
Yeah, do the microphone, so Kathy gets it good, 'cause she's gotta, she's gotta do that one over there, if you don't care. She's gotta do minutes off of this, and...
Generally, when it comes to equipment, we charge a monthly fee.
Hold it to you, can't hear you.
Generally, for equipment, we charge a monthly fee. The monthly fee is less than the rental rates you could get from rigs or United. That's also stated in the contract, Mr. Stuber.
I read the contract, I know it is, okay?
Because of the cost it takes to move equipment, we generally leave equipment there for the duration, unless we do not need it any longer on that particular job, then it is immediately moved off.
But whatever it is would be disclosed in your GMP?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
What's, what's, what's wrong with disclosing those figures for those costs on a monthly rate, or whatever, however you're gonna charge? Why are we not...
Well, Mr. Stuber, let me answer it this way for you. Basically, because we have not had any negotiations, knowing you have not been to any of the meetings. We're here to answer your questions anytime you'd like, throughout all the meetings we've had. But we have to have questions given to us to provide feedback.
Well, I'm asking a question, why?
Because I don't have that information in front of me today, sir.
When, when will you have it?
Well, I guess I can sit down and generate that information for you, if needed.
Well, is the city not, do, do, do we not have a right to see that?
Yes, sir, you do. You also have a right to attend the meetings.
I've attended the meetings.
No, sir, you have not. You have not been in a single meeting we've had.
Negotiating?
That is correct. You've been at our, the interview we had, that is the only meeting, I believe, you sat in on.
The council, the council appointed the mayor, Trey Smith, and yourself to do the negotiating. They didn't, they didn't appoint me.
Well, these prices, though, come out in the A two oh one contract. What we were negotiating was, it's a, it's a two-step process. You do the A one thirty-three.
Yes, sir.
Then we get into these.
Yes, sir.
Problem with executing the one thirty-three was there was an eighteen thousand dollar fee, which is not in the, in play anymore.
That is correct.
Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
So now you can start working on this, and you can give us all the prices, once you start getting some drawings.
That is correct.
I mean, there's gonna be stuff you can't tell us until you get the drawings, if I understand correctly.
That is correct. That's why we do stage pricing for you. We've, I believe, fifty percent, ninety percent, because as Mr. Stuber's aware, construction documents develop as the project's built, by your architect. We have no intention of changing your documents, or your drawings, that is not our role in this process. We are here to assist the council and assist the architect in looking at the feasibility of construction, and providing feedback on current pricing, not to be your designer. So as the project documents are delivered to us at those two stages, we will provide you a budget at that time. And during that budget, we would have all this pricing in there for you to see at that time.
Just so I'm clear, 'cause I've heard a couple of different things, I think I read the email that you, that you sent, that said that you would be willing to waive the eighteen thousand fee, but if the contract negotiations didn't go forward with the second contract, then you would want to recoup that, that money, which I understood that. But I keep hearing that the eighteen thousand's gonna be stuck on the back end, so I guess I'm a little confused, what we're talking about here.
Generally, when we've, we have always been reimbursed for our pre-construction fee because of the amount of man-hours we have invested in developing these prices. So what we do is, we bill the pre-construction fee, the eighteen thousand, in stages. We do not bill that until we provide a budget price. So we do the work before we bill.
Okay.
So in this particular project, if we wouldn't have waived it, we would've had three different bills. We would've billed a third of it at the fifty percent, a third at the ninety percent, and then the final third when we gave you the guaranteed maximum price. In, in this case, because we have volunteered to waive the pre-construction fee, we would not bill the eighteen thousand unless, until after we gave you the guaranteed maximum price, and if you rejected it, then at that point, we would bill you the eighteen thousand.
But if we accepted the guaranteed maximum price?
We would waive it in its entirety.
Okay, that's the way I understood it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Repeat what you just said, on that last part?
If, which part?
The last part about accepting, if we accepted the bid?
If you accept our, our guaranteed maximum price, when we put the project out to bid in conjunction with the city, and with the architect, and we open the bids downstairs, once we give you that guaranteed maximum price, if you accepted, we would waive the eighteen thousand dollar fee.
That's what I thought you said.
Mayor, just to clarify something, back to Mr. Stuber's point, I think one reason why that information has not been provided, you know, the council has not requested that information, the council, which has been working on the A one oh one thirty-three, or one, you know, whatever that document number is, so that information, I believe, has not been requested of Van Horn Construction to this point. You know, I, I, we may have difference of opinions, but, you know, I think it's a little premature on that, dealing with this stuff, dealing with this part of it, but that, I just want to clarify that I believe that's why that information has not been provided.
Mr. Stuber, well, I, I beg to differ with you, but, but at our last council meeting, I, I sat right here and repeatedly talked about that information, and, and why we didn't have it, or why we were moving on at that point without it. And, and, and we're back with another proposal, that, that we still haven't produced it.
But I don't think the majority of the council has requested that information be provided.
Well, by God, I requested it, okay?
Well, this is a little bit off of what I had understood, and I'm getting this from several different people that I've dealt with, that have been involved in one fashion or another with the construction management process. You could tell us what you're gonna charge us per hour for a superintendent, bookkeeper, whatever. But without the documents, you wouldn't know how many hours they're gonna be out there.
That's correct.
You, you don't know if this thing's gonna take you a year to build, or eighteen months to build, so we would still not know the total cost of a backhoe and a Skytrack, we just know what your monthly fee would be.
Yes, sir.
If you told us today what those numbers are.
Yes, sir. One of, one of our fears is, we can provide you way more information than you need, that would scare you. You know, I could list a crane in there, not knowing if we need a crane or don't need a crane. Or Mr. Stuber could come back and say, well, where's my trencher? You know, it becomes a list of what do you provide, and what do we not provide, because without drawings, we don't know what equipment we even need yet. People, yes, we can provide pricing on people, but equipment, at the... People, yes, we can provide pricing on people, but equipment at this stage, you know, kinda like you, I've seen a concept drawing, you know, a colored pretty picture of what it will look like when it's complete, but that's the only thing we've seen at this point.
You, you, you can provide prices on equipment whether you ever take that equipment to that site or not. I mean, if you, if you, if you price equipment, you, you can price it and, and if you use it, you get paid. If you don't use it, you don't, if you don't take it out there, you don't get paid. I don't, I don't see what's, what the big deal about knowing specifically every piece of equipment you're gonna have out there or need out there.
Well, it's just a matter of how much time should I spend in the beginning, I guess, trying to figure out what equipment we need without any drawings? You know, I don't know if we're gonna hit rock. Do, should, so do I start sizing different pieces of track hoes with a hammer hoe? You know, I, I have no feel for anything out there at this point.
Mr. Weisler, with all due respect, I've worked around this crap for forty-nine years and, and, and the same old equipment shows up on most construction sites like that. You know, the same old equipment, maybe the duration, it stays there, changes, but the same old equipment shows up.
Well, sir, a lot of it is the same. Yes, sir, you are correct. And a lot of it is different. And I know you're very knowledgeable in construction and we would appreciate your input in a working manner. I'd be happy to provide what I could, I'm just not sure what you need. We're, we're waiving the pre-construction fee because it's our city. We pay taxes here. We're part of the community. But there comes a point of how much extra work and how much free work do you want me to do before I even know if I'm a part?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat, I'm gonna repeat the same old thing, and, and that is, if we put this out for hard bid, every general contractor that bid on it that didn't get the job would do what you're doing for nothing.
Could you repeat that, please?
I said if we put, if, if the city of Russell put this project out for hard bid, put it out for bids, every general contractor that bid on this project, if they didn't get the job, they would have wasted their time to come up with a price on that project. They, they would get paid nothing.
To do the guaranteed maximum price portion?
Yeah, to, to, to come up with a...
Just that portion, yes, sir.
To come up with a bid price.
But all this work upfront that we're doing, no, sir. There's two different phases.
Mayor, are we done?
We're done.
Oh, yes.
Again, I'm happy to provide any hourly rates we can and monthly rates. I just, I'd like to narrow the scope.
Does anybody else in the council wanna weigh in? I know eighteen thousand dollars sounds kind of insignificant, but to me, that's miles of lane rope, that's a lot of toys in the pool, um, it's the amenities that are gonna end up being cut at the end of this deal. On the other hand, we can continue arguing about this as long as everybody wants to, constantly backing the project up, and I see very little gain that we're gonna have after doing that. I think it's time to get the right people in place. I've never had any problem at all in my confidence in either Van Horn or ETC. Both of them have said they can work together and deliver a project. Mr. Smith, if you think it would be easier for the council to override the veto, to move this process forward, then I would entertain a motion and a second that we do exactly that, get this decided and move on.
Maybe we have a motion second on the floor right now, and that's to take the contract amended with the two issues that you stated earlier and, uh, hopefully put this behind us and move on.
Which way works better?
Well, they don't, you know, if they, if there's no motion to override, then the next thing they can do is do this. One is just to, the override would put the contract as proposed to sign. The other one is to sign as amended, as talked about. So, but the motion's been made to do the, as amended, so that's, that's what's up.
Okay. Did everybody understand that?
I could hardly hear. I couldn't even...
Go one more time so everybody can hear.
The council can either override the veto and that contract as originally proposed would be the one signed, or a motion can be made, as has been made by Mr. Tripp, to sign the contract as amended, as per the amendments that were discussed prior to that
Mayor, my thoughts on the, making the amended motion was taking your, your feedback, your concerns, et cetera, into play into this.
Okay.
And putting that, that dynamic into this contract to where you're more comfortable with it, you're good with it moving forward.
Yeah, and that, now, that sounds cleaner, so...
Yeah.
Does everybody understand the motion in a second?
Not exactly. I, I want some clarification on, on this business of whether to, uh, uh, deal with the vetoed motion or not. Do we just ignore a vetoed motion and sidestep that?
Yes.
Yeah.
The veto will stand?
The veto would stand and then we'll...
On the original contract.
The veto of that one would stand and now you're voting on version two with the corrections made.
Do we not need another resolution for the amended document?
Yeah, I sent you one.
I know.
Right. That changed.
Did you just send it to me?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a short recess to let that be gathered up?
You know, I, I guess my point is, or my thought is, the mayor, the mayor vetoed something or other and we just kept right on negotiating in a different manner. I mean, we come up with a new deal, like trading cars, as far as I'm concerned.
But Mr. Stuber, and I love you, but, but the mayor, based on the correspondence that I got through emails, the mayor and, and, I can't ever say your last name, the Van Horn Construction, were talking back and forth between them. So the negotiation was really going on between the mayor and them, and then they came back and said they would change it, so as long as the mayor was working with them and he was the one that needed to be pleased, I came in here today thinking everybody was sort of, a little bit on, more or less on the same page and negotiations had been worked out without us being involved.
Yeah.
It's up to them if they want it.
I didn't...
Yeah.
I did, yes.
Do we take a short recess to allow that? Mr. Smith? Do we make a motion for that, or does the mayor just call that?
You can either make a motion or the mayor tend to clear at ease for a few minutes, so...
I'm sorry.
What are we doing, Mayor?
Here's where we're at on the discussion right now. This resolution, does, does the council, council wanna take a short recess and let Ms. Collins type it up, get it in final form and give you a copy, or do you wanna move ahead and let her top it up?
It'll just take a few minutes. Trey's already done.
Okay.
Take a recess.
We're gonna take about a ten minute, five minutes, two minutes? We're gonna take a recess till we see her come back through, so everybody, stand in, stand in.
Hey, Max? Let me get through. Hey, Wally?[1166.21]